Good, alright, start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please. Mrs. Bottalato, Mr. Eftikar, Mr. Pico.
Here.
Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Mr. Yagnam, Mrs. Harold.
Here.
Mrs. Scharfstein.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Sunshine Law, this is to advise the general public and to instruct that it be recorded in the minutes, setting compliance with chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled The Open Public Meetings Act. Stanhope Board of Education located at 24 Valley Road, Stanhope, New Jersey, has caused this notice to be posted at the office of the Stanhope Board of Education, mailed to the New Jersey Herald, the municipal clerk of the borough of Stanhope, the Stanhope Post Office, and posted at the Valley Road School and on the Stanhope Public Schools website, setting forth the time, date, and location of the meeting. The Stanhope School District in partnership with the community commits to provide a quality, comprehensive education for all learners with equal emphasis on academic excellence and citizenship through values, respect, and service. Our vision is to inspire and cultivate a community of innovation, innovative, curious, compassionate, and globally-minded learners equipped with knowledge, problem-solving skills, and the ability to persevere to make a positive impact on society and shape a better future.
Okay, an executive session will be held for the purpose of student activities. Formal action may be taken. Item number one, board goals and objectives, ethics training. Thank you, Kelly.
Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having me in. I really appreciate it. So as part of your annual ethics training, we're going to just do a little bit of a brief update on some of the new things with ethics in the presentation. And then we'll go on to board and district goals. So again, I have to make that disclaimer that this is not to give any type of legal advice. It's just for informational purposes only. So you have the act that we're going to talk about through the presentation, and then also about some of the minimum standards that has to do with ethics and the code. So you're all aware that you have to abide by the Code of Ethics, the mandatory training. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Have those disclosures done in April. That'll come up really soon again. And abide by the prohibited acts. This gives a little snapshot of what the commission looks like. And you can see there that there's two vacant seats if you want to apply for that as board members. You can sit on the commission, which I don't know, I think it would be pretty interesting, but a lot of work, I'm sure. Again, those financial disclosures, they were due in April. Just keep that in mind again that they'll be due soon. And then your mandatory training. I just wanted to point out that on year three with Governance 3, we just updated that, and it's a student achievement piece that's really super interesting. It talks a lot about the Lighthouse Study and how boards can kind of move the needle with student achievement based on their strategic focus. So if you're not in year three and you just want to take a look at that, the first half of it is really super interesting about that student achievement piece. And as a board member, I think that it's really beneficial to just take a look at that. And then as we had talked about numerous times, you have the advisory opinions, and there's usually about thirty-five of them each year. But one of the things, and you'll see this little cute little policeman, we're noticing that boards are just saying, well, they're just an opinion. And the reason why we have that little policeman there is because we're saying like, if a policeman told you that you would get arrested if you did certain acts, you know, you wouldn't like test that knowledge, right, or text that guidance. And so we're asking you to please abide by those opinions. They are very important, and they spell out exactly what you should be doing as a board member. But we've had some issues with some board members lately, so we just wanted to highlight that. And these are some of the current advisory opinions. Another slew of them probably come out towards the end of the year. And we don't have to go through them, but they are, they are going to be emailed to you. And they're in that school board notes every single time there's an update, so you have those. And then also you have the complaints. They have a hundred and eighty days to put in an ethics violation complaint, but they do have to put that factual evidence in. So you usually see about eighty-five of them per year. They drop off because they, you know, the people that are complaining about the board members usually don't have that factual evidence, right? So you'll see that they kind of drop off. And then this is some of the sanctions that happen when you, you know, have a violation. The reprimand is just a letter saying, don't do that again. A censure is actually a letter that's read at a public meeting and stays on the website for thirty days. A suspension is something that is pretty high level. And there's one in particular that I'm just going to point out when we go through. And then a removal, we haven't seen that for quite some time, but there, you know, there's always time. But that's for something that's like repeat offenders. And then, of course, you have the code. I put that in your packet, so we don't have to read through them, but it's important to have knowledge of that. And then some of the cases, they're in there, and I don't have to read through all of them, but I do want to just point out this one. So a lot of times, board members say like, why do we have to do this ethics presentation year after year? Well, you're, by statute, you have to, but it's like, you know, there's a lot of times where board members have been on for a really long time, and they feel like, oh, we're in ethical standards. But you can see here where there's a fifteen-plus-year board member that decided it was a good idea to go to an employee's house, pick up a letter, get that letter over to the BA, and tell the BA, don't give this to the superintendent, and then voted upon some of the criteria from that letter instead of recusing herself. So fifteen-plus-year board member and still, you know, violated the Code of Ethics. So, you know, we have to be mindful, and we have to do these little refreshers, because even after fifteen years, sometimes people do things like that. So she got suspended for sixty days because of that. This is newer guidance, and I just want to go over it because a lot of times, board members don't understand the difference, so between recusal and abstention. So years ago, if you were legally conflicted, you would just abstain. Now the guidance is that you should recuse yourself if you have a, you know, any type of legal conflict. You should recuse yourself from the discussion and the vote, and not just abstain. Abstaining is that you don't have enough information to make that vote. Recusal means that you're legally conflicted. So, super important, that's a, that's a newer guidance, and we just wanted to point that out. And then, of course, if you have any type of business or any, any extra favor that you would get more than any other board member that's sitting at the table, you should recuse yourself from those type of discussions and those votes. And we put this into the packet because a lot of times people say, well, what's a benefit to me? Well, sometimes a benefit is direct, that you're very obvious, and sometimes it's indirect. It's, you know, maybe a family member that's going to try to get a job or what have you. Then you would recuse yourself from any of that type of activity. I included these in the packet as well, some of the conflicts of interest that you could read through, just giving you an example. And then also that guidance about the definition of who is a relative. There's a chart in there that is really very helpful. And then, of course, we know that we can't hire any relative to the CSA or a board member, so you have to be mindful of that. And this is a little bit of newer guidance because there was a family member that wasn't part of the union, but worked for the district. Before, you would be able to be part of negotiations, but now the new guidance is saying because that family member, even though non-union, their contract is kind of based on the union contract. So they're saying that that is a conflict. So then you couldn't be on negotiations, and you couldn't vote to ratify the contract. So just be mindful of that. Even if your family member is not part of the union, you should recuse yourself from any activity as far as negotiations or ratifying the contract. That's a little newer. And then campaign season is coming up, so we don't usually see this where the union, you know, gives, endorses you, but if they do, then you would have to stay off negotiations for a year. And then again, if you have relatives in the district, especially this guidance about the board president. If the board president had anybody working in the district, the board president shouldn't pick anybody that's on the committees because it seems a little bit of a conflict of interest that you could be guiding those chairs. So you would stay away from that, and you wouldn't be on personnel negotiations, anything to do with finances. And then advice of council defense, that, you have to have all four of those components there if you want to say that, well, the council told me it was okay to go ahead and do something. A lot of times we have board members that say that, and they, it doesn't fit all that criteria. So just be mindful that if you are going to do something and say that, oh, well, it was the advice of council, that you would have had to have given the full story, full disclosure, and done before the act, disclosed everything if you wanted to use that. Because we're seeing a lot, an uptick of advice of council cases. And they're very, very specific, that they want to see all four of those components in that. Volunteering in schools, of course, as a board member, you can volunteer in schools, but it is that degree of involvement. If you're giving a directive to a staff member, a board member should never do that, so you'd stay away from that type of volunteerism. If you're going to read or come into the class and help or what have you, that's all good. But if you're giving any type of, you know, directive to a staff member, then you would have to shy away from that type of volunteerism. And then we put some examples in the packet as well, just so that you could see the difference between an inherent violation and not inherent. Social media, always a big fat problem, so if you could stay off it as a board member, that would be advisable. But if you can't and you feel that you want to comment on different things, just put this disclaimer exactly the way you see it on there so that the public realizes that you're not speaking in your official capacity, that you're speaking as an individual. Super important because the vast majority of the complaints are all about social media. And then also, just because you have that disclaimer doesn't mean that that's a get-out-of-jail-free card. You can't speak as a board member just because you have that disclaimer. So you would have to speak where the public would realize that you're speaking in your personal capacity. And that is it. Very compelling, right?
Thank you.
So good. So we're, we're set with our ethics for the year. Thank you so much on that. And it's my understanding, I put into your packet an example of some board goals that I recently did with Hawthorne. They did a really great job on those, but it's my understanding that you've drafted already, so why don't we chat about, about those?
I'm gonna pull it up on the board.
Yeah, that's great.
So what I'm gonna pull up are drafted suggestions, right? Obviously, it's, it's the board's decision to ultimately decide and vote on goals for the district and for the board. But I find it's way more efficient with our time if we can at least put some ideas down for us to review.
Definitely.
So here's the first one, which is actually a repeat goal from last year. If you remember, this was an initiative that we were hoping to complete, but for lack of time and a lot of other things going on, it's not something that we were able to do. We had hoped to do it in the spring. So the hope is to then bring in the school culture and climate survey for the community, for the staff, for the students, and deliver that in the fall once our, our students and staff had settled in. The verbiage is the same as what was approved last year. It's to enhance the overall learning environment and promote a positive, inclusive, and supportive school culture by conducting a district-wide climate and culture survey. This initiative will engage all stakeholders, students, staff, parents, and community members in providing feedback that will inform, inform strategic decisions and improvements across the district. Action items include the following: survey design, stakeholder outreach, survey administration, data collection, result sharing, and development of an action plan based on results. Open to questions, comments, feedback? Again, something that we did discuss last year.
Yeah.
You still feel as though it's a worthy initiative?
Yep, we're still moving forward with it, so.
Okay. All right, so moving on to two. Two is also a goal that we drafted last year. It was our third goal, and it was partially completed but not fully complete. And it's an item that I had planned on talking about in our curriculum update today. And this is in the area of curriculum instruction and programming. Build student choice in elective scheduling for middle school, grade six through eight students to provide more diverse offerings and to promote exploration of the arts and STEM during the regular school day. So we've made a lot of progress towards that this year in that we were able to successfully move our STEM art and music teachers from a part-time capacity to full-time employees, allowing us to expand on these curricular areas at the middle school level. Instead of having a tip, one or two art classes for the year or for the semester, instead, we were able to expand music into the middle school, which we hadn't in, in multiple years. And for the start of this year, the kids will have each course as a quarter, a four-day-a-week quarter. Quarters one, two, and three, each kid will have a music, an art, and a STEM. And the plan and the goal to at least partially achieve this goal would be to give students choice in their marking period for elective. So after experiencing music, STEM, and art, they'll be given the opportunity to select one of the three curricular areas for their fourth quarter. Now, it won't be just general STEM, general art, or general music. The reason we delayed it to fourth quarter is so that we can develop a comprehensive curriculum for different types of courses. Examples that I might give would be for music, instead of general music, maybe sixth grade is doing guitar, seventh grade might be percussion, and eighth grade could be music history, music theory, rock and roll, any of those types of things. Whereas STEM might be, you know, robotics in one grade, coding in another, and broadcasting in, you know, in another. Those are just examples. They're not anything that we necessarily discuss. But coming up with that many courses does take time. It takes time to draft the curriculum and come up with ideas. So that, that would be my, my goal for this year, with the ultimate goal, either the year after or the year after that, allowing students to have choice throughout the entire year. Building enough courses so that either by trimester, or by semester, or, or even by quarter, the students will have choice of up to six electives at any given time. So again, a goal that we had already drafted, gave a little bit of context and some background. Happy to hear any feedback, discussion, ideas or concerns?
Is there any merit, and I'm not saying for this year, but say for next year, if you're able to go mostly choice, to not limiting it to the grade? So like, let's say somebody in sixth grade, they took STEM, they thought they'd like it. Turns out it wasn't their cup of tea. Now maybe in seventh, they want to do something different, but just because we have such a small group of kids, is there any merit to merging six, seven, and eight when it comes to choice? So that it's not grade-specific?
Scheduling would be really difficult, only because of the, the limited number of students and sections that we have. We have two sections at every grade level. If we had eight sections at every grade level, it would be a little easier to manipulate schedules where you could have, you know, let's say, a, a team schedule, a team schedule, a team schedule with grade six, seven, and eight. I'm not saying it's impossible. I honestly attempted a little bit of it when I was experimenting with schedules last winter. It's definitely something to look at, but I, I do think that it would be challenging to do that.
Thank you.
But again, as we do this, you know, I'd like to involve the board as, as much as possible, get some feedback, review, you know, what we're putting out. Anyone else?
Sounds good.
We're good with goal two?
Yep.
Okay. Goal three is something that I put together. I did have a conversation with Matia a couple weeks ago, just trying to, to, I'm sorry, scrolled up too much, plan some ideas that we should focus on. And we, we agreed that we didn't really have a whole lot of content-driven instruction, and we wanted to go based on, on academics and student achievement. Given we added a double block to our middle school math program this year, and we hired a whole nother teacher to accomplish this, actually two teachers to accomplish this, I wanted to draft something that's, that's speaks to that initiative. Here we have to maximize the instructional impact of double-period math blocks in grades six through eight by strengthening student engagement, accelerating overall learning, and improving performance on district benchmarks and state assessments. Give you a minute to just review. Again, questions, feedback? Anything?
The only thing I would say for year one, it's good if we carry this forward. It would be to offer, if we could, again, you know, a more advanced math, if, if we can get there. Right? When we developed the zero-period for the high school, the hope was they could take math there, but that's not playing out, so we still don't have a place for geometry if any kids need to get there by eighth grade. I don't know if the two teachers will hand us that, but I think that's something we can't lose sight of.
It's possible. We definitely have the opportunity to send kids to the high school to take geometry. We have in, you know, against small school, we haven't identified a student. Couple discussions that we had about some incoming fifth graders possibly moving forward. But yeah, you definitely need the, the student in order to do that. Yeah, I mean, we've done it before. We've incorporated geometry with our own staff.
So, just a thought there. Something around offering, you know, more accelerated.
And I definitely see this as a multi-year goal. This is not something that we can achieve in one year, and we won't even have the data to measure it after the first year, because even though the kids will take the NJSLA this year, we won't get the results until next fall. So at least two, if not three years. You know, you, anytime you have a new initiative and new staff, you're, you're looking at a minimum of three years before you can really see true results. All right, do you want to do more goals? Do you want to just keep going?
I got it. I'll take it. So on the board goals, similar to the district goals, two are carryforwards, one is new. So the first goal there, again, as he talked about with student choice, it's been a, a goal for a while now, and this is here just to remind us of our role in supporting that and doing what we can to bring good ideas to the table and to move that agenda forward. So that's board goal one, which is the same as it was before. Any questions on that one? Okay, on board goal two, again, this is, this is still a carryforward. This is continued participation in New Jersey school boards. I know we've made a little bit of movement, maybe not as much as we'd like as a board. You know, I know Kelly and I, you had talked about coming in here and doing some overall board training because we have some folks who can't get out, you know, so we need to look back into that collectively. But, you know, leadership within NJSBA, for those who can, we have some new folks who are going to Ed Services. I know Avery got a new school board member designation. I know, you know, Jen Haswell and I have one, a few. So I just think this is something, you know, as we continue to grow as a board, that it's also, again, important to keep our eye on in terms of board leadership. So I don't know if anybody has questions on that one?
Yeah, you're up to, with today, you'll be at seven credits, so you need sixteen to be certified. So, so you're getting there, you know? So we're, we're seeing an uptick in the boards wanting to get certified as a full board.
Halfway there, almost. And then number three is new, and the reason this one was drafted is because I wanted to memorialize the work we are doing relative to regionalization. This doesn't say that we are regionalizing. This memorializes the board's commitment to go through the study, which we put all the motions forward, we put all the, and, and they have all passed to say that we are engaging in the study. That's all this is intended to convey. It's not intended to convey a desire one way or the other to regionalize or not. It's simply to do the study, which we're committed to doing. The grants have, have come through, I believe, through Nethcon. They're the lead in this. So it's just memorializing that as a board, we're doing that work. So thoughts on this one? I just want to make sure it's worded so that everybody's comfortable, so that it's clear. It's not a drive towards regionalization, just the commitment to do the study itself. Okay? Everybody okay with the wording of it?
Yes.
Yep.
That's not supposed to match what's on this paper, right?
That was last, that was last year's.
No, yeah, I just included it in case we wanted to discuss it.
Before, it's, it's this paper. We have two different papers in front of us. Yes.
I never, I never handed this one out because I put it up on the board, but I can.
Then why do I have it?
I gave it to you.
Oh, you gave it to me. I'm sorry.
I just neglected to hand it out, if you don't mind passing through.
Certainly. Sorry, Matt. Coming your way.
Don't we have a, a district goal that focused on the, kind of the, the physical, social, and emotional while being students last year?
So.
We have that on there, or I could have sworn we just put focus... We have that on there, or I could have sworn we just put focus in on just making that something that we were going to continue to strive for.
Twenty-four, twenty-five is the paper you had in front of you before?
Correct.
Uh, and that's what's been out there? So the two that I said remain the same, and the other one was the BA position?
I think that was two years ago. That we did that, and we had voted that it was, uh, at that time, it was achieved, and we had moved on from it.
Should that just be something we always want to continue to put a focus on, just like our educational and our curriculum, like, we're never fully achieved in that, right? Is that, is that something we should just keep, just in continuation, so that we don't always focus on it?
I mean, something worth discussing for the board, yeah.
Yeah, and and I think we see it come through in the CSA evaluation, too, um, where we talk about certain aspects in the evaluation, I forget which standard, but I remember writing in there the things we're doing towards, you know, positive behavior intervention and and referrals and plus and all of those things to support the students. So I don't think it goes away ever, I agree with you, but I think we had the goal a few years ago, because we were lacking some things we needed to build.
Right.
And so we built those, and I think that's why we moved on from it as an overall board goal, but it doesn't ever go away.
I also, I also think, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, that with the climate and culture survey, which is pretty comprehensive, it gives all stakeholders really a voice and an opportunity to express how they feel we're accomplishing things like that, and to also offer their feedback and and opinions to help us develop additional programs or or, you know, additional courses to incorporate, you know, whatever it is that that people are looking for us to put in. So I do think that that piece is there, um, you know, and it they're always open to continuing, looking at different goals and 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 different areas to focus on on a on a yearly basis. I think it's 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 pretty clear, and I believe everybody at this table understands that just because these are the goals that we're establishing for this year, this is not the, you know, the end-all-be-all of all the things that we're doing in the schools, right? We're obviously doing a lot of other things. All of these goals, at least the district goals, tie directly to the the budgetary, um, additions that the board voted to to move forward with this year, right? The additional math teacher, um, the, uh, what was the second one?
Art, music, STEM.
Yeah, the the
The full-time teachers there.
Additional special teachers, right? Incorporating that student choice, a considerable amount of money went to that, so it makes sense to memorialize our our movement in that direction in the district goals. If that makes sense.
Sure.
Okay, so if if everybody's okay with this, I will, since we do are missing a few board members, um, I will send this out, draft email to the board.
Yep.
Uh, just so that everybody can review, and then we can put together a motion to approve next month. Does this work for everybody?
Yep.
Kelly, I have a quick question, because we're missing some of our board members. The ethics slideshow that you provided, would you be able to send that to us digitally, so we can share that with our board members?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'll I'll email it out to everybody.
I actually have it, I'll put it.
Oh, you do?
You sent it to us.
Oh, that's right.
I'll I'll put it in PDF format, and I'll send it out to the board.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and thanks for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Feel better.
Rest up a little bit.
Have a safe trip home.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, that was good. So that moves us forward onto presentations, access for ELLs assessment presentation coming up.
All right, so thank you, so, um, we are required as school districts to report out on the results of any standardized testing within to the board within the community within sixty days of receiving the results. Uh, for whatever reason, the access for ELLs, which is an assessment that's taken for our English language learners, the results are coming back to us earlier than they ever have, and before the other standardized testing results. So in order to to meet that that, um, compliance issue, uh, I have to report on the access for ELLs this month, instead of waiting, which I typically do to to report it with the NJSLA and our DLM results. Um, because we're so small and because we don't have a huge ELL population, we are are restricted in how much information I can provide. Uh, I'd love to be able to break this down by grade level, I'd love to be able to break this down by number of years students have been in the ELL program, but because we, all of those numbers would produce a a number of students less than ten, we're not allowed to communicate that information. Um, so just as a reminder, the this assessment is administered every every spring to students who are learning, um, English as a second language, the score range is one through six, and students who score a four-point-five or better are eligible to test out of the program. So the total number of students kindergarten through eighth grade that were tested last year was twenty-two, the year prior was eighteen, uh, and you can see all of the levels, um, uh, that they achieved that. I think it's important to note that unlike the NJSLA, right, where a a one or a lower score is not, you know, you would consider it not proficient, most of these students, as you can see, the eleven who scored a one, we wouldn't expect them to be proficient. Those students moved to our country, you know, from, um, whether it be overseas or or from another country with zero English proficiency, therefore, the expectation would have been that they would score a one. Um, the goal of the district is to, over the next several years, move these students from level one to a four-point-five or better. So hopefully, we'll see that trajectory, um, you know, over the next several years. We had quite a few families, uh, move in and register students again this year, uh, with zero English proficiency, um, which, again, is one of the reasons why the board made a a financial effort to increase services for these students. Uh, we moved to Rosetta Stone to free up a significant amount of time for Mrs. Connolly, who's our LLL, ELL instructor, to work with these students. Um, we have on the agenda for tonight, um, a a stipended, uh, opportunity for Ms. Connolly to serve in a coaching capacity, coaching our staff outside of school hours to help them with resources to support ELL students, but also to help community members, whether it be, uh, learning the English language, helping with forms, helping, um, just with them better understanding, uh, the expectations within the school and 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 within the community. Um, so we had four students score at four-point-five or better last year, uh, we are just getting these results now, although it doesn't necessarily mean that they will exit out of the program, they are eligible to exit out of the program. So aside from getting that score, they also need the recommendations of their teachers. Uh, if a teacher says, yes, they scored great, but they're really still struggling, we'll continue to offer and provide the services, but if the teachers come back and say, no, they're they're great, they they're able to pick up everything that we're putting out there, then we would move towards, um, declassifying them as an as an ELL student. Questions?
None. Um, I know that we can't obviously have the resources that are on our website in every language that somebody might come here speaking, but are we, do we have anything set up for parents who are obviously not English proficient? So that the important parts, I mean, it's all important, but the the parts where they have to sign or things that they can actually understand proficiently what they're signing?
So to an extent, on the website, you are able to translate the content.
A numerous amount of.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at it.
It's from the holster, where you can select the language.
I mean, I looked a little bit, but I didn't look too much at it.
But what you, but what that won't do is change the language of the forms that we produce and then link to the website. So certainly, parents can change the language of the physical website, the forms is more challenging. We do, we really try to produ- provide them in Spanish, we know that Spanish is not the only language that's spoken by our families, um, but trying to find resources and people who can help translate it, um, that's where the challenge lies. I know that there are opportunities to do so with artificial intelligence, however, I don't necessarily feel comfortable translating something that I then can't proof or have nobody to prove to know exactly what we're putting out, right? I don't want to put, I don't want to put correspondence out and have absolutely no idea what it says. Uh, we use those tools to correspond during the school day, somebody comes in to register, and they're speaking another language, we'll we'll break out the technology, and we'll be able to kind of have that conversation, but to put anything in writing is is a little bit more challenging. We are, we are trying to get better with Spanish, um, our instant alert system also allows us to translate into Spanish, um, just have to remember to click that button, which sometimes I forget.
Every time we've had an another, um, speaking family, another different language, we've actually utilized outside resources to help us with that transition.
Okay, great, so. Just because I, you know, I I sit here and I think to myself, it's got to be so difficult for the children that come in to learn, but then for their parents and stuff as well, because they're not getting, obviously, the same support and may or may not have the ability to get that on their own.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, that moves us on to correspondence, uh, budget approval for the preschool program.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've been getting correspondence on this now for several months, uh, this, I believe, is the final letter that says that we are approved, we're in good shape, spend the money.
And we have the new addition, or the money that we requested to get back from the prior year that the state reduced, I believe it's twenty-five thousand.
That sounds right.
Yes. Questions on that? Okay, uh, to your report then.
Okay, uh, no HIBs or suspensions since our last meeting. Um, back-to-school night, as a reminder, is Thursday, September eleventh, that is not next week, the week after, uh, the program runs, uh, six to nine for most families. We do offer five-thirty for anyone interested in coming in and listening and hearing about our RTI program, but we'll get information on that, uh, within the next week or so, um, out to parents. Um, just want to really thank our facilities team, our technology team, for everything that we have to go through, they have to go through and endure throughout the, uh, throughout the summer. Um, Mr. Pico was nice enough to come and spend some time with us during the ice cream social and walk the building, greet some of the kids, and one of the comments that I feel especially proud of is, you know, especially somebody who has a a long history of working in school, uh, on school boards and and with facilities, just commenting on how clean the building is and and how crisp everything feels. Um, and, you know, they they had to do that again this year with several construction crews, you know, walking through and delaying what we normally do. Uh, construction was supposed to be done by mid-August, you know, although it's done enough, and I'm very happy with the outcome, there are still things that have to happen. So our facilities team, unfortunately, is trying to wax our hallway floors while people are still walking through and and working on the building. Mr. Llama is trying to program our new our new doors, while unfortunately, not all of the door handles are here and operational and installed. Again, we're in really good spot, I'm not, I'm not saying that that I'm concerned in any way, I just want to acknowledge the hard work of of both of those departments, uh, to get us where we are able to open next Tuesday.
Thank you.
All right. Um, staffing update, uh, we we are in, in my opinion, pretty good shape, uh, we are still in need of a few paraprofessional staff, uh, that's not uncommon, especially with the influx of preschool students that we have with needs, uh, and that we have eight students from other districts coming into ours, all, again, with needs, they have special needs, which is why they're coming to our school and engaging in our programs. Um, I did, you'll see on the agenda that I I am looking to hire, I interviewed Tuesday two individuals, um, of last of last week, uh, no, I'm sorry, today is Wednesday, I interviewed them on Monday, process paperwork Tuesday, and looking to hire today on Wednesday. Um, so, uh, it was, it was good. Um, for physical therapy, we had put out for a shared regional position with Lenape, Byram, um, Netcon, and Stanhope. Uh, the reason for that is because we had a resignation of our previous physical therapist who was shared between all of the districts. Unfortunately, because of the timing, uh, and because we're pretty locked into the budgetary number, we weren't, we did see a few candidates, but we weren't able to come together and agree on a candidate at a price point. Um, so we negotiated with J and B Therapy, who we use for occupational therapy, um, a a significantly reduced rate for our three districts to use a physical therapist for three days. Um, so if and when you look at the contract that we're looking to approve, it's for three days of physical therapy, we are only in need of one day of physical therapy, but we will invoice Netcon, and we will invoice Lenape for a day each. Uh, so the contract looks larger, but a lot of that money will be coming back in. Um, having one contract for them instead of three was one of the the reasons they gave us a reduced rate, uh, so we're not that far off from what we were paying for similar services last year. Okay? Um, construction updates, like I said, we're in pretty good shape, uh, we do have a handful of door handles that are that were faulty, um, doors open and close, the the electronics of it aren't necessarily working, so they're rushing the parts to us, we do hope and expect that they'll be here before Tuesday, uh, and installed and ready to go. If they're not, we do have precautions in place so that we will be, you know, safe and secure, uh, but that's really the only thing left, other than a couple tweaks with the door project. Um, if you haven't had a chance to, I mean, they they look great, but the functionality of them, um, is even better. Our ability to, from our phones, from the computer, lock doors, mass lock, mass unlock, for example, uh, the doors were all unlocked today, so that we can get in and out of classrooms for the ice cream social, we wanted to lock all the doors so that the kids couldn't get in unsupervised and and destroy what the teachers had put together, Mr. Llama, a couple clicks of a button, was able to lock every door in the building, right? And I come through with a key fob, I can open them up, uh, so the functionality is outstanding. Uh, science lab, um, looks beautiful, couple, couple things that are still left to do, minor things, Mr. Pico was able to take a look in there today, uh, but very happy with the the actual construction and and the product, teacher's very happy, the kids were, kids were wowed as they walked in, uh, and were able to check it out. Underground storage tank is out, we no longer have an oil tank on our campus, um, we had several whiteboards, vertical whiteboards, uh, installed all the way around our math classrooms, so that the kids can work in groups, not just at the front board, but, you know, in the back of the room, inside of the room, in the front of the room. Uh, carpets have been installed in the classrooms where we needed new carpet, and we did the finishing touches in in the music lab. Um, Chris, am I missing anything, any projects?
I think that's it.
We do, we do continue to have some frustration with the air conditioning units, uh, it feels great in here, uh, but the main office, our, my, the administrative offices, the STEM lab, and our two kindergarten classrooms, for whatever reason, the rooftop units continue to malfunction, um, they have a part on order. Again, I'm hopeful that it's ready to go for Tuesday, uh, I'm not concerned in that we're barely going to touch seventy degrees, it's not going to be a heat wave that we have to be concerned about next week, uh, but there is a level of frustration that it's it's now been over a year, and we're still having, you know, some issues. Um, the architect and the contractors are receptive and they are responsive, it's just a matter of of getting the part that we need, uh, for them to to repair and replace.
Steve, uh, so all those problems that you're having with the air conditioning, is it, is it, uh, do we have to pay for the, uh, parts?
No, this is, we are under warranty, this is all, um, it's all repairs that are covered, uh, with our initial contract.
Thank you.
All right, um, again, you know, as it gets colder, though, you know, I'm I'm hoping to get this done soon, so that we can see the air conditioning in action for a period of time, because the further it's delayed, if we're not using it, we may run into the same issues next spring. Uh, so we're, we're, we're trying to get it rectified, I'm confident that the contractor's going to continue to work with us, uh, however, ninety-five percent of the building, as you can feel and hear, is operational, it is working, uh, and again, it's not a safety issue.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last piece that I have on here is the the ice cream social, which was held today, uh, thanks to the HSA for, again, sponsoring, this is, you know, the eleventh year that we've done it minus the COVID year, uh, where we had to cancel, um, they brought in an ice cream truck this year, uh, which was super exciting, the kids were not expecting that, uh, and, uh, it was, it was a lot of fun had by all, the kids were able to walk the building, see their friends, see a bunch of our teachers who were able to stay, middle school kids were given locker numbers and combos and allowing them to struggle through that today, so that they're not struggling through it on Tuesday. Um, want to thank the teachers also for for staying back and for the parents for for getting the kids out here.
Great.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, it's still youth curriculum, keep going.
Sorry, I, I know it's probably unbearable at this point. Um, so on the agenda for tonight, I'm requesting approval for the music, updated music curriculum, it it's pretty much the curriculum that we've had with some tweaks, and the tweaks were necessary because we have not offered music theory to our middle school kids in over twelve years, um, since I've been here, and we haven't in order to save our band and choir program. But now that, um, the position is a full-time position, we are able to reincorporate that, offer, again, a little bit more choice, a little bit more selection for our students at the middle school level, um, so we just dove right back into that curriculum, made sure that it was appropriate, um, for our students and for our programming. Um, and then I talked a little bit about, uh, the the schedule release that I have on here, uh, the intention was to talk about our future plans with student choice in the electives, uh, to spoke a little bit about how each kid in middle school will have music, art, and STEM for the first three quarters this year, be offered choice marking period four, with the intention of expanding that choice program, um, next year and and into the year after, so that the kids are next year and, and into the year after, so that the kids are, they're, they're not just looking at very general subject areas, but we, we can kind of really focus in on, on specific content in areas that students are interested.
Thank you. All right, Jen, curriculum, I'm sorry, Policy Communications Committee.
We did have a policy committee meeting, you're going to see, I think it's two policies or three, is the dress code split?
Two policy and one regulation.
Yep.
Okay, and regarding, we discussed dress codes both for staff as well as students, just kind of a refresh of the wording, nothing, nothing really changed, you know, the, the general don't wear your pajamas to school, don't come in a bathing suit, wear appropriate shoes. Um, that kind of thing, spelled out a little bit more for staff on what is and isn't acceptable, um, because it used to have one standard, COVID kind of changed that and now it's trying to get back to what the standard was, so that was updated a little bit more. The other policy or it's a regulation is the having to send in a render.
It's okay, I'm open right now.
The policy is only for staff dress code, there's no changes to student in it, right? I just, I pulled it up because I wanted to make sure to talk about it, but there's nothing that we're approving tonight relative to student.
Regulation was attendance, do you want me to speak to that real quick?
Please.
So, so again, um, Mrs. Harold spoke a little bit about changes that we made during COVID to accommodate the, the culture that we were current living in at that time. And one of the changes that, that the board agreed to make, um, was to the attendance policy. Again, we were encouraging families to stay home if they were ill. Even if it was the slightest sniffle or the thought that they might become ill, right? Uh, and we were encouraging them to do that and we were trying to offer virtual instruction for them. So the policy change that was made was to no longer require parents to send in a written note to excuse their child towards truancy. Now, parents were able to just make a phone call. Um, that in itself has almost created a lax expectation, right? In whether or not students should be coming to school and when they should be coming to school. Um, we've moved past a lot of that from COVID, you know, a sniffle shouldn't keep you home from school. Um, obviously, it's still at the parent's discretion, but the school has an obligation to monitor truancy. And if students are truant, to follow through with corrective action plans, you know, within the school for the family. And ultimately, if necessary, bring them to truancy court for a hearing. Um, so what I'm recommending is that we go back to the policy pre-COVID, where in order to excuse a child for the purposes of tru- truancy, a parent will either have to send in a written note or a doctor's note. It doesn't mean that they have to go to the doctor if the child stays home because their allergies are really bad, they simply have to write us a note. Um, it also doesn't prevent them from, from keeping the child home. Uh, it's just that extra, that extra layer that we're hoping to enforce to improve our attendance. Um, although, uh, attendance has declined a bit over the last four or five years, we're still not in bad shape. I think I've mentioned multiple times here at, at our board meetings, we're one of only two districts in the entire county that are not on a corrective action plan for attendance. This proactive approach is, is designed to keep us there. So that we don't move into that, that, that gray area where now we are in a position where we have to do a corrective action.
Seven to ten years ago, we were.
Yes.
We, we were there, we've came, come back and slide a little, so we need to.
When I was, when I was hired here eleven years ago, our chronic absenteeism rate was at like fourteen or fifteen percent. Within two years, we got it down to six or seven and we've pretty much maintained that with a, with a slight uptick since COVID. Questions?
I, I have a question. So if a parent, uh, sends in a note that their child was sick, I'm trying to put this in the right perspective. There's a certain amount of days that the child can miss without being negative. So if the parent is one of these parents that keep them home for a sniffle, um, do we send a letter to the parents telling them that they're getting close to?
We, we do, we do send letters out. Um, a, a lot of times the letters are, are just based on general attendance and, and that's when they're general, right? That's when Mr. and Mrs. X, your child's missed five days and we're at this point, or your child's missed ten days. When the absences start accumulating towards truancy, that's when the letters become much more specific. And we outline, well, these are the consequences, these are the things that will happen if this continues. We do have in our policy, which is in most school policy for attendance, that regardless of the reason, if a student misses thirty days, it's an automatic retention.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because, you know, sometimes parents do that, if their kid gets up, uh, they're sneezing or something, oh, stay home from school today. But it affects them in the long run, you know, so I just want to make sure that the kid doesn't suffer because the parent keeps the, the children home.
We emphasize that at kindergarten orientation, preschool orientation, back to school night. Um, one of the things I always tell the parents, if you're unsure whether or not your child should go to school, don't let your child tell you, send them to school and let our school nurse tell you.
Okay.
Right, send them to school and if they make their way to the nurse, Mrs. Frank will either tell them you're, you're not sick enough to go home or, you know what, you're, you're pretty miserable, it's, it's time to send you home.
Thank you.
That brings us to Board President's Report, uh, so not much, uh, for me, you know, individually, the only thing, and I'll bring it up under old business, is moving forward with the regionalization study we just talked a little bit about in goals. Um, we've had a few email communications back and forth about setting up now the steering committee, which is the next step in the process. Um, other than that, nothing else has really, uh, moved forward at all with regionalization. Uh, or, you know, uh, anything other than what Steve's already reported on from my perspective. So again, under old business, we'll have the discussion around kind of where we are now and what the next steps are. Um, just so we can have a full discussion around it, because I'll need a volunteer for another committee member too, so we'll get to that in a little bit. Okay, that would bring us to public session number one, but we have no public, so we will move past that. Uh, and that brings us into the sections for approvals, so, uh, let's see here. Can I have a motion please for the minutes, uh, from last time?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, this is a voice vote, please, all in favor say aye.
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 I think I need to abstain from one and two, I don't think I was here.
Okay, so this will have to carry forward again, so. Yep, carried forward last time.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I think that was the meeting.
You're abstaining from one and two.
Yeah, I wasn't.
An affirmative in three, for three.
So really, we're now just going to vote for number three.
Right.
Okay.
All in favor of number three? Aye. Thank you. Any other no's or abstentions? Thank you. I guess now we have to update our, uh, agendas here to show the recusals going forward.
Yes, I, I made note of that, especially on our administrative action items.
Yes, thank you. Okay, uh, so Board Member resignation, uh, motion to approve with regret the resignation of Mr. Iftikhar from the Stanhope Board of Education, effective August twenty-first, this is a roll call vote, but I'll need a motion please.
Motion.
Thank you. Go ahead, roll call please.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you so much. Administrative action items one through nine, can I have a motion please? Second.
Second.
Thank you. Give everybody a minute to just peruse through those.
For, uh, line item number five, this new agreement with Washington Township. Um, how does that change from what we had budgeted in the prior year?
Um, so we, this was a shared service that we had for the last two years with Unity Charter School. Um, because of some concerns about Unity Charter not, not paying us the bill, uh, in a timely manner, uh, we've decided to separate from that contract. Uh, if we were unable, so we then approved the staff member, um, at a part-time rate because we didn't at the time have a shared service partner. Uh, Washington Township School District was in, in, uh, looking for a part-time LDTC. Uh, I was able to connect with them, we discussed, um, a potential contract to, to make the individual full-time. Um, so really, it's the exact same agreement that we had the last two years. Uh, I feel fortunate that, um, we were able to do this. Uh, it was a good employee who was ultimately potentially losing medical benefits and, and losing salary. Um, the reason for a position like this, you want to do shared services and have them full-time, even though it's a little bit more money, because now you have to pay the benefits, is it's very difficult to find these staff members that have these titles and it's especially more difficult to find them at a part-time role. So if we didn't find a shared service, in all likelihood, we would lose this employee and have a very difficult time finding a new one.
Sure. Does Unity Charter still owe us?
Yes.
And what's the status of that?
They're, they're making regular payments with the intention of being paid in full by the end of the school year. And we are closely monitoring, Board Attorney has been involved, uh, and has communicated with their Board Attorney as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, what exactly does the SCIP do? Is that like boosting morale for teachers?
The skip committee is the school improvement panel.
Okay.
All right, it is required that all school districts have a skip committee. Um, and, um, it, it is an opportunity for the, the people who are on this committee to meet with administration to discuss, we meet monthly, which is a little bit more than what is required, to discuss areas of improvement throughout the school, um, areas of, of concern, um, that there may be. Um, it's required that we discuss the evaluation process, uh, the things that are put in place to evaluate staff and to support staff, uh, we review progress for teachers who need mentoring plans. Um, so it's, it's, it's almost like I consider it a monthly check-in, if that makes sense. Uh, Mrs. Fair has served on the committee for, for as long as I've been here. Um, full disclosure, you, skip committee members aren't supposed to serve more than a three-year term in a row. Um, and we are looking to enforce that moving forward. So Ms. Kalish, who I'm recommending that we approve, would be new to the committee. And the expectation is that Ms. Kalish now would have some experience on the committee and we would find a replacement for Mrs. Fair next year, so that somebody else can restart a three-year cycle.
For number nine, is that always part of the course, using Sussex County, uh, SCC for?
It's actually not, it's a new initiative, uh, that was put together, uh, in consultation with the Prosecutor's Office, the State Police Department and the Sussex County, uh, Education Department. Um, it is not a Stanhope thing, it is a county-wide thing. So there, I don't want to go into specifics because it's safety and security, I'd, I'd, I'd rather that be, be kept more confidential. Um, but it is a uniform plan that every county district will follow, should there be a need to, to relocate and reunify.
Yeah, it used to be Lenape for us.
Uh, it was, it was, we would approve a few schools.
Yeah.
Um, and there was a lot of confusion as to what would actually happen. I always had concerns about Lenape, should, God forbid, there actually be a, a tragic emergency like that, I don't think it would make much sense to go a mile and a half up the road and have people who were probably impacted also helping us get through it. Um, so there is a plan in place, we've done a, a ton of training last year to make sure that everyone is prepared, should we need to do that. Um, so to answer your question, the location is new, the plan is new, but the practice is not.
So maybe, um, is it more appropriate to discuss this, uh, I guess like when I think of transportation, if multiple, you know, if, if Lenape or ourselves need to have the same sort of transportation and how does that particularly work?
Through this plan.
Yeah.
Um, the Prosecutor's Office, State Police and County, um, Department of Ed have contracts in place with local transportation companies to assist should there be an emergency. And, uh, you know, what, what we've been, what has been explained to us from law enforcement is, should something like that happen, you're talking hours before you even need transportation, right? They're not letting anybody leave until the, the scene has been investigated, until everything's been cleared. Um, you know, so it's not like somebody, a bus needs to be here in ten minutes to move these kids, you're talking hours before that happens. Though, the goal is to keep the parents and the community o- off-campus here and to move them towards the site in which the kids are going to be relocated.
Thank you. Any more discussions? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
All right, Policy Action Items one and two, can I have a motion please?
So moved.
Second please.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, so two on here, we just discussed dress and grooming, these were specific to staff and attendance. Any discussion further?
I just want to.
Go ahead.
As far as the children wearing, uh, pajamas to school, I know in Byram, they have, sometime they'll have like on a Friday, the kids will wear, it'll be pajama day. Do we have anything like that?
So we don't allow pajamas in school unless it's pajama day.
Okay.
And, and we, we do have spirit events where kids are allowed to. And our, our lower elementary teachers will often have that as something that the class can earn. But we do feel as though our kids should be coming to school as prof- as young adults and professionals, so we prefer that they don't wear pajamas on a regular basis.
I agree a hundred percent.
But there are no changes to student dress code that we're approving tonight, these are just staff.
Okay.
All right, uh, roll call vote please.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Education Action Items one through five, motion please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's see here, we have any discussion on one through five?
Is there any way to effectively measure how successful number two is?
Um.
Or document the times that it's been used?
The time will be documented, we'll have, we have the teachers, just like, so I compare this to the technology coach position that we have, where we have somebody here to offer support to, to the teachers in, in that area. Um, we ask them to keep a log, not necessarily that they're being paid hourly, so that we have a good idea of what they are doing. So tracking progress, I don't know so much that there, that there's really going to be measurable items here, but in, uh, tracking the use of the position would definitely be something that, that we are planning on doing. Um, uh, Mrs. Connolly is, is planning on, um, hosting parent nights for, for uh, families who are, are not English-speaking, uh, offering help, having kids help out with, uh, childcare, because I know that's usually a barrier anytime you're having parents come in. Uh, so yeah, we, we definitely will be monitoring the amount of time that's put in in the programming that we're, we're implementing.
Thank you.
Also, I believe we discussed her helping with after-school activities, so those students feel more accept, like, involved.
Yep.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussions?
Um, on music curriculum, I'm assuming Mr. Baird played certainly a large role in that.
He was the primary drafter.
I just want to say, because I did read through them, really well done. Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm certain that he had to put a lot of effort into that and everything.
Uh, that mostly goes to him and, and Principal Decatolo, they worked together on that.
I just wanted to say, it's a good job.
Hearing no other discussion, can I have a roll call vote please?
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Personnel Action Items one through twenty-one, motion please.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Good, second please.
Second.
Thank you. Give everyone a minute to take a look through.
Line item twenty, uh, was that one of the teachers that we were bringing in for, for full-time?
Yes.
So is this normal to have to do this as a?
The reason we had to add twenty is because the NJ DOE has not officially issued his teaching certificate yet.
Okay.
Um, he's, he has a substitute certificate, he has subbed, um, for years up at Lenape. Uh, this is precautionary, should the certificate not be issued by Tuesday. Uh, we have the ability to, to request an emergency cert. Should the certificate not be issued by Tuesday, this motion would still allow him to begin the school year as the teacher of that class.
Okay.
Just without the actual certificate.
Does that affect, uh, his pay rate or?
It will depend on when the certificate is issued.
Right.
If we get to a payroll period, um, and the certificate is still not there, we aren't able to pay the certificated rate, and we also can't start him at, with medical benefits because he wouldn't have the certificate to, to fulfill the actual role. I feel confident that's not going to happen.
Was that due to the state taking their time and dragging their feet, so could we like retroactively approve him at the right rate?
A lot, again, a lot of it's going to depend on when, on when it's issued.
Right.
Um, I, part of the issue may be that um attended college out of state, that usually takes a little bit longer than somebody who maybe goes to an in-state college. Um, but like I said, I I feel confident we'll have it, we'll have it done, we'll have it figured out, and there won't be an issue. This was more than anything else, just to take the precaution and be proactive.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Okay, business services, one through 21, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody a minute, read through.
Were there any additional contracts uh for the special education this year that we received, or is everything?
Uh, additional? Uh, yes, um, I'm just trying to put my my timeframe involved. Uh, and and I'm trying to remember the last time I I had mentioned who else we were bringing in. We have eight students, um, we budgeted four.
Yep.
Uh, so we're in a, financially, we're in a really good spot. Now it's just a matter of finding the paraprofessional support staff to to work with everyone. Um, that's not to say that we won't be staffed come the start of the school year, we have a very healthy substitute teaching balance. Um, um, that will be able to come in and and help out with that, but it's always nice to get permanent people in place so that there's consistency.
Any other discussion?
How much more room do we have um as far as if we were to get other kids?
Um, we have room in our programs should we need to accommodate a student who moved into district. Um, I don't believe at this point I'd be looking to bring any other tuition students in. Um, one of the programs, the numbers are are slightly lower because well, a couple of our Stanhope students have, I don't want to use the term graduated, it's not the right term, but they've, they have succeed enough to return to mainstream, which is great. I'd like to see them be successful before I start filling seats with students who don't live in town.
Makes sense.
Um, so I'm not looking to bring in any other addition, uh, additional tuition contracts right now, also considering it's hard enough to find paraprofessionals.
For sure. Thank you.
Hearing no other discussion, roll call vote, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry, um, just on the same one. 19, when I clicked that attachment, it didn't have any information on it. Um, so I didn't know if that was intentional. Or if anything I'm missing that we should know about.
So I'm showing the attachment is showing a retroactive for Mrs. DeCataldo uh to do a virtual, I'm sorry, not a virtual, an educator's evaluation meeting back on August 7th.
Okay. Training, it's a required training.
And then Mrs. Frank is looking to go to an annual um in-service uh in October, no cost to the district.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe it was my computer or something, but I just. Thank you. Uh, in 20, um, I noticed that the field behind us is going to be used for football practice. Um, and uh, which I think is awesome, as well as cheerleading. Uh, I would just caution, you know, when we created the contract uh for the renovations of turf, the amount of damage that's going to happen from the practice versus what we could actually accomplish if there was no physical activity being on there, we might see dollars wasted. When you, when you aerate a field and you put seed in it, but then you have 20 kids playing football on it, your results are going to be very limited and varied. Um, so just having a clear expectation of what's going to happen between lending the field out versus trying to rehabilitate the field.
Yes.
And if it makes sense to spend money doing that, I think is an appropriate discussion to have, so we're not just throwing dollars away.
I think the, one of the main goals of wanting to get the field to a point where it it's playable was to open this opportunity up for the community.
Right.
Um, an added benefit too is that, you know, we we will use it, we use it sparingly for phys ed. You know, we have beautiful facilities inside, they, you know, we will use it there, we will use it for recess. Uh, we'll closely monitor it and make sure that if if it does need a a rest or a break, right, well, there's no reason we can't reach out and say, hey, we need to take a couple of weeks, we need, we need to take some time. Um, you know, as of right now, it got some pretty heavy use in the spring, uh, and early summer, I think it held up okay. Is it the greatest turf in the world? No, but when you have nowhere else to practice, uh, you know, the they, the community has has sincerely expressed their appreciation for being able to use it.
I couldn't agree more, I think it's wonderful, I just don't want us to hold the standard of that needs to be C.O. Johnson field with how it looks.
Right.
Because we're spending the money to get it there, and we're not going to get there if we're having constant physical.
I don't think there's that expectation.
Okay.
And obviously, if that comes my way, it'll, it'll be something that's addressed. Um, the the discussion itself reminded me of a request that we unfortunately did have to deny. Uh, it was a request to put um portable lights on the field. Um, I spoke with the town administrator and and the process that we'd have to, that they would have to go through. First of all, we, the request came in too late, it never would have been able to be uh approved um in time for their desired use, but they'd have to go in front of the land use board because of of the impact that it would have with with our neighbors uh down below. Um, so we always do our best to accommodate and to and to say yes, but unfortunately, that was a request we weren't able to approve.
Fair enough, I think it's great, thank you.
Can we, with the football practice, could could you like uh limit them, limited them to not practice during rain, when it's raining, because the field that will get torn up more when the when the the ground is wet?
Uh, it's definitely a conversation that we can have. Again, like I said, we're gonna, we're gonna monitor the use of the field, we're gonna monitor the turf. Um, and uh, we 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 do have, you know, when, when we get behind, Sunny Side will come out and and they'll help us with with the grounds. Uh, and they always give us recommendations too. Um, and they've been, they've been pretty fair and reasonable with us.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, roll call vote.
Mr. Pico?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harold? Mrs. Sharpstein?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Okay, uh, before we get to new business, Jen, I think we skipped Ed Services update.
Read that services update.
I knew something was missing.
I, it's so soon out of my head, no.
Sorry.
I um, I had the pleasure of attending the Ed Services meeting because Avery couldn't. And I will say their building looks great, they are all set to open up, they are fairly well-staffed, even with paraprofessionals. Um, although, like anybody else, they can always use more. Unfortunately, where they're not well-staffed is their principal resigned. So their superintendent is currently, for the foreseeable next couple of months, doing both superintendent's job and the principal's job. Um, and their, the timing of it's kind of tough because they're still working on obtaining the other building that was beside them. So they're trying to figure out how they want to hire for the principal, they were talking about whether or not they hire a supervisor or two supervisors and the superintendent. Because if they obtain the other building, now they need somebody in the other building, um, so best how to use that. But o- overall, I mean, they're ready to start the school year, they're excited to welcome their families back. Um, the families all are aware that the principal is no longer there, and the superintendent um had gone out and met with most of the family's personally over their summer extended program to have conversations on specific needs, so they're in good shape.
Thank you. Any questions for Jen? Okay, that'll move us back forward to new business, anybody have new business before the board?
I'm not sure if this is new business, uh, or even if the school get, should get involved in it, but I have a concern about all this technology that the kids from fifth grade to eighth grade, they go on their tablets, and they're, they're looking for things. I, it's hard to explain, they're looking for what's going on in the in the world. And there's a lot of predators out there. I don't know if there's a way that they could be told or or how to not do it or stay away from certain things. Uh, it's it's hard, but I just have concerns that something might happen, because you know, my granddaughter does the same thing, she's always doing something, but my daughter keeps an an eye on her. But just in case parents don't keep an eye on them, I would not like to have anything happen because the the student didn't know what to do or what or what to stay away from, if that makes sense.
Sure. We have multiple programs in place for our students
Okay.
that teach them responsible use of technology and the responsible use of of the internet and social media. Um, obviously, you know, we can't go home with them, and we can't guarantee what they are and what they aren't doing. And like you said, there is a, there is a responsibility on the parent, right? Um, in the past, we've, we've attempted to do parent nights. Um, we've had, every time, very low attendance. Um, you know, it's not something that I'm against doing again. I would be, I would be hopeful that we'd have more parent, uh, more people come out. Uh, there are definitely grants available that we can take advantage of and 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 organizations that can come in to support us. Uh, I think, if not last year, the year before, uh, we had someone, I think it was Jenny's house come out and and they, they offered a program for us, and I think I had one family attend. So it's, it's a struggle, I definitely see it.
It's just that, I don't know, I have, I'm a sensitive person, and I don't want to see anything happen to any of these students. Um, if I can, if I can help it. Uh, as long as we have that program, I'm happy, this we're here, it clears my mind that somebody is trying to let the kids know what to do and not, what not to do.
And aside from from those programs that we bring in, uh, that is addressed by Principal DeCataldo and and uh Ms. Capola, our guidance counselor, every year. They do a middle school summit
Okay.
where they spend a whole day going through expectations and, you know, responsible citizenship. Uh, and they also have beginning-of-the-year assemblies with uh our our K through five and and really focus on cyberbullying and and proper use of of the internet.
Okay, I'm still learning, so.
We all are.
Thank you.
Didn't the Lions Quest program also address some of that with the younger grades as well?
That's one of the programs that comes in, I think that they work with our fourth and sixth grade students.
Good.
Thank you.
That's all I had.
Thank you. Any other new business? Okay, that'll bring us to old business. Um, on regionalization, as I mentioned, so where we are now is we're ready to form a steering committee that will help inform the um group through Rowan University's Institute for Policy Studies, kind of uh what we want to study, what we want to make sure is included in the study. Um, and and that's the purpose of that steering committee, is to work with the those folks from Rowan University and to ensure that, you know, we're we're getting what we think we need out of the study on all sides from all districts. Um, most of the districts right now are doing up the board president, board vice president, the superintendent, the BA. There is room for a third person on the committee. Um, so I'm looking for a volunteer, I know that's hard, we're down a few people this evening. Uh, but if anybody would just email if they have express interest in joining that committee. Um, it will be a large committee for schools times, you know, four to four people each, four to five people each, makes for a large committee, so what we have said is we want at least one to two representatives from each board there for the meetings, but we can't schedule around 20 to 30 people's schedules for every meeting. Um, we don't expect the meetings to be very frequent, maybe once a month. Um, but if there's anybody with interest on that, uh, please send me an email, um, and I will let you know if you want to do it, unless you know right now.
Where do meetings help?
So we don't know yet, but in in our district somewhere, it'll be either at Byram here, Net Kong or Lenape. To date, they've been at Lenape when we were doing the initial committee, which was to do the applications. Uh, those were mostly at Lenape, we had one at Byram, maybe?
We did one at Byram, I think we did one here too.
Yeah, so in this immediate area.
It was that night, probably, right?
They are usually in the evening, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you give me an example as to like something the steering committee may bring up to the group at Rowan? Because my understanding is the feasibility study will provide all information and all data.
It will, absolutely, everything that they they know to include, that they can think of to include.
Isn't, isn't this study supposed to include everything?
Right, but what what is everything?
Well, that's what I'm saying, they don't, they don't have a set of boundary.
Them, as well of things that that may or may not.
Of information you would want them to include in the study?
On potential structures
Right.
of districts that they they want to add, like look into.
Right.
Um, right, so the potentially keeping this, the schools with the same community versus doing a K2 or 35, you know, a 68, a 912 uh kind of thing. So you're getting input from from all, all um participants in all three communities on what they might want to see the study look like, if that makes sense.
It does, but like, isn't the study, like if you said, no, you guys go ahead and just do the study, what are they going to provide us?
The difference, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, my understanding is the needs of, for example, our small communities can be vastly different than, say, if you take Bridgewater or Cherry Hill, where they have so many more buildings and people to accommodate. So it could be something as little but not little as Stanhope doesn't currently have transportation.
Right.
So, you know, to me, that's an important component to say, but if there's nobody saying it, the people doing the study may or may not know that that's of an importance up here versus a community that already has busing for everybody.
Okay.
I mean, I realize that's a generic kind of thing.
The local information about the communities and about what's happening and about what we would like to make sure is included, right? There's a lot of conversation around about, hey, yes, there there could be really great things, but there could be things that will change dramatically that people might not like as much. We want to make sure both sides of the story are told, we want to make sure everybody who sits on that steering committee and and is involved and engaged, and and at points, they'll come to us with questions. Hey, we found this, we think we see this, what do you think of it? We don't know what that is yet, we haven't had those meetings, right? And and you have to realize, this entire process is very new, the law only changed very recently. So I think there are, last I checked, maybe 10 to 12 districts interested, I believe two to three studies have maybe been completed, but the process itself is very new because prior to the law changes, there were so many impediments and financial drawbacks to doing this. People didn't move forward at all, right? So we need to be sure that we have representation from every community who is there to lend a voice and to help drive this thing in the direction that we need to see it going and making sure that obviously it stays within the grant that's funded, nobody's spending any money, that was ground zero for us. Nobody can, we're not spending money to do this, so right, there's time and money involved. So we want to make sure that it's being directed in the right way.
And the steering committee will have to report to the board after their meeting?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
And also, I don't know if Mr. Hightman remembers this or not, but in years past, when we were kind of all acting as individual schools, the studies were hitting our offices, we were pumping out the information, as opposed to you guys pumping out the information.
Those, there still will be a component
Absolutely.
of our, our offices needing to give
Absolutely.
you know, information as part of this, but but as to Matia's point, right, they're going to come to the steering committee with questions on what information are we, are we looking to provide, what are we looking to to collect? Um, and again, to your point, we we don't really know what to expect, it's all new.
Yes, it's all new.
I feel like you guys are more involved this, with this steering committee and with the Rowan University, Rowan University input.
Does that help?
Definitely.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
And I don't know, Matt, if you have an interest or time, um, because, you know, it's one thing, you could have interest, but not time. But because you bring up a lot of really great points, maybe it is something you want to think about joining into, because there are, there are things I find sometimes that you ask, and I'm like, oh, wait, I didn't think of that, and and they're really good ideas.
Appreciate that, unfortunately, um, I'll be leaving the board as of December, so, uh, yeah.
Sorry to hear that.
But, but appreciate your kind sentiments, thank you.
Thank you. Any other old business? Okay, hearing none, I think that moves us to, let's see, public session number two, we still do not have any public, which brings us to our executive session, can I have a motion, please?
Show move.
Second, please?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Uh, be it resolved that the Stanhope Board of Education adopts the following resolution, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Stanhope Board of Education is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Stanhope Board of Education, County of Sussex and the State of New Jersey, that a closed session of this Board of Education, where the public shall be excluded, will be held at this time for the purpose of student activities. Be it further resolved that the action of the board with regard, regard to the above entitled matter shall not be disclosed to the public at a later date, I'm sorry, shall be disclosed to the public at a later date, and to the extent that the same is not prejudicial to the interests of the parties involved and would not result in a possible invasion of their right to privacy. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Thank you. Thank you. We are now in executive. Can I have a motion to re-enter public session, please?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Can I have a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes, abstentions? Okay, now that brings us to adjournment. Can I have a motion for adjournment, please? Thank you. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's it. We're back.